Good evening. It's 7:07. We'll call the meeting to order. All members are present. And we'll begin with the transmitting of Treasury Warrants 35, 35A, 36, and 36A. Do we have a motion? So move.
Second.
Made in second. And all in favor? Unanimous? We have no minutes to approve this evening. So we'll move to our 7:00 appointment with Nancy Valley, Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce. It's regarding a request to conduct the Town of Wilmington Eighth Annual Half Marathon and 5K Run/Walk on Sunday, September 22, 2013. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good, thanks. How are you?
Good. As you mentioned, my name is Nancy Valley. I'm the Executive Director of the Wilmington Chamber of Commerce. And I am here on behalf of the Chamber Board of Directors to request permission once again for the Chamber to organize and implement Wilmington's Ninth Annual, not Eighth, Ninth Annual Half Marathon and 5K Road Race. The race this year would take place on Sunday, September 22 at the same location, 10 Waldham Street in front of WCTV in their parking lot, again from 10 to 2 p.m. Last year, we had 625 total participants, which was our highest to date, and up 100 participants from the prior year. Out of that 625, 427 were racers and 198 were walkers. When Tom Pizarro, founder of this event, started this event nine years ago, he had a vision for this event to, you know, bring a credible and professional half marathon to the Town of Wilmington, which would attract many out-of-town racers. And he told us when we took over four years ago, the Chamber, that we would never, ever, ever get 200 half marathoners. So we met the challenge last year with 204 half marathoners participating. So we were happy with that. The event continues to grow bigger and bigger every year and attracts many out-of-town racers and running clubs, as well as athletes from our schools and the community. We provide a fun and festive atmosphere, including the opportunity for Chamber members to set up tables to promote their products and services. This year, we're also looking to getting both courses certified, which provide additional credibility to the race and to our runners. So we would again work closely with the Wilmington Police Department to ensure safety throughout the courses and proceeds from the race benefit, scholarships for Wilmington graduating seniors again, and of course, we will again provide a donation to the Town Scholarship Fund. So I ask the Board if permission for us to do it once again.
Very good. Thank you. Before going to the Board, just to ask if there are any objections or any other recommendations from Department Heads from the Manager.
I have an email from the Public Works Superintendent. DPW has no issues regarding the proposed half marathon. Then the Fire Department, they're also, they are in agreement. They have no issues with the half marathon. And then finally, the Police Department, after reviewing the requests submitted by the Wilmington Chamber of Commerce Half Marathon Committee, the Wilmington Police Department recommends approval. The Department has a favorable working relationship with the organizers of the event in the past.
Good. I should say, Mike, I guess it's probably prudent. I sit currently as the President of the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce. So I won't vote when it comes time for you folks to decide if to approve or not. But I guess I will say that, you know, having a great working relationship with Nancy, the Town has had a very successful relationship through the years. The event, I believe, from my perspective, has been a real positive event in the community. It's growing. And once the course is certified, I think we'll see it even grow fairly substantially by virtue of the fact that a lot of the competitive runners will now look at our course as one of their courses that they want to factor in as they prepare for other competitive races. So, you know, I think Wilmington can really shine here within the community, as well as the greater community. So I would encourage you to consider it favorably. And thank you, Nancy, for a great presentation, but I won't be voting on it.
Anything else up here?
Just want to say thank you to you and your whole committee for everything that you do. Obviously, to have a Ninth Annual Event is quite a significant accomplishment. And I know it's going to be great this year and every year after. So I'm certainly in favor of it.
Good. Go down here.
Yeah, me too. I can't believe it's been four years since you've taken it over.
I know.
And it's been growing every year. And I just want to clarify, it was my son, Louis Smaglia, that ran last year, not me.
Yes.
You say you get that confused.
But we will say that Jeff Hall actually ran the half marathon. Is that correct?
I did.
Yes. So we'll be looking forward to a certified course in a real time for you.
And I think Jeff beat Lou Smaglia Jr. fairly handily, too.
I truly support it. And I think it's all been said. Look forward to that day. Thank you.
Do we have a motion then?
Make a motion. We grant the request.
Second.
Made in second. Anything further? All in favor? That's four in favor, none opposed, with Mr. Shumpu abstaining. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Our next scheduled appointment is with Scott Grant, the Chairman of the Fourth of July Committee, and it's regarding a request to use municipal parking lot for Carnival and Town Common for the annual Fourth of July festivities. Good evening.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening. Good evening, members of the Board. As I try to figure out how to do this, it was a great pleasure to tell the Board that early in the third period, it's Wilmington five, Danvers one. It's, which looks like Sunday at the Garden. Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I saddle myself down that direction?
Mr. Chairman, now that Nancy's left the room, we're getting ready for our 33rd celebration. This year's dates are Tuesday, July 2, through Saturday, July 6, with a rain date, which I'm always fond of saying is absolutely unnecessary, of Sunday, July 7. Family Day will be on Thursday, July 4. And our ceremony and the spectacular fireworks will be on July 6. Family Day fireworks will be on July 4 itself. As the Board is aware, with the construction at the high school, we've had to do some considerable, make some considerable changes to our plans this year. And we have come up with a proposed plan that includes relocation of the site of the Carnival and relocation of the nonprofit community groups. The planning has included additional committee meetings, a meeting with Town Manager Jeff Hall and members of five different town departments, and a meeting with the immediate abutters of the Fourth of July parking lot. Some of the common concerns that were expressed at that meeting by the immediate abutters centered around noise from the carnival, lights, debris, and crime in the area. If I can step up to the easel. See if I can pull this back. This obviously is the Town Common area here. Fourth of July building is here. Our plan is that the first two rows of parking here will be maintained predominantly for handicap parking. It will provide us where required by code to have less than 20 spaces. It's going to provide a minimum of 50. And on the big fireworks nights, it'll provide exactly 60. Carnival will be situated here. And this green line here on the back of the Common in front of the trees is where we plan to have the community groups. Couple of reasons for that. First of all, Church Street will now be open. So one of the options was to have them along Church Street, but we didn't want the vendors operating with their backs to moving traffic. Additionally, thank you. Additionally, because of the trees being here and them being lit at Christmas time, there's already electricity there. We're working with George Hooper and perhaps Redding Light to bolster what's available back there. The police trailer, which is normally situated over here, is going to be moving up next to the gazebo. And these two will be the same, my great artwork. This is the food service tent, and this is the dining tent. The only other significant change here will be, for safety purposes, we'll be running a snow fence along the Common here, sawhorses across Middlesex Ave to direct people into the parking area. School Street, Drury Lane, at the instruction of the Wilmington Police, will be closed to all non-residents. The people who live in that street will obviously still be able to get in and out when the carnival is open. One other thing. The area over here in front of the high school, where the teachers and administrators park, that'll be maintained as parking exclusive to the, one car for each of these groups, so they can bring in their materials, bring in the pizzas when they have to run out, et cetera. That's the, that's the plan right now. And let me talk about some of the implications and the falling dominoes, as it were. I also have, and I know the Board hasn't seen this as of yet, but this is a rough draft of the carnival layout. And of course, it's subject to Fire Department approval. Fiesta Shows is our contractor, Carnival Contractor is certainly adept at working with the Fire Department, make sure that they're maintaining access for emergency vehicles, which is the Fire Department's primary concern. To address some of the issues that were raised at our meeting with the immediate abutters, most of the area around the carnival will be, excuse me, fenced in by snow fence to prevent any debris from going out, even though Fiesta does a terrific show, a terrific job every night cleaning up. Fiesta has purchased new, they just spent $370,000 on new Quiet Run generators that I'm told you can literally stand next to and have a conversation. So they'll be bringing those to Wilmington. We're putting a restriction on them in addition to the fact that we'll be reducing the hours of the carnival. We've always run to a minimum of 11 o'clock. On weeknights, we'll be running no later than 10:00, and on the weekend nights, 10:30. We're also putting a restriction on them that the music coming, emanating from any of the rides has to be turned down at 9:00 and turned off at 9:30. They're well experienced in running from locations where there are houses around the setup. So they know how to direct music, how to direct lights away from residences. And in this case, it'd be, my guess would be towards the gazebo area, Town Common, but away from homes. In terms of the crime concerns that were raised, I'll defer to the Wilmington Police Department on that. But as I've said to the Board in my correspondence, I have complete faith in the Police Department's ability to confront any issues that may arise. Obviously, with the loss of the parking lot, for the next two years until presumably some parking becomes available at the then newly opened high school, we're going to have some parking issues. And once again, I spoke with Father Early recently at St. Thomas Church, and they have generously offered us the use of their parking lot. We're going to become more dependent upon it, and the Committee's going to have to be down there working and parking cars every night, whereas in the past, it was on the fireworks nights. As the Board is aware, on the big nights, the firework nights, in the past, we've run bus shuttles from various locations around town. We're going to do that every night. On the non-fireworks nights, we'll be doing that from two locations, more than likely Shawshing Elementary School and North Intermediate to hit both sides of town. On the fireworks nights, we'll do it our traditional routes, which makes five stops. North Intermediate, and these aren't sequential, but North Intermediate, Town Hall, Boutwell Middle School area, Shawshing Elementary. Just a matter of advising the Board, the carnival generates just shy of 90% of the revenue that we need to run this event every year, exclusive of the money we spend on Family Day. And that includes bands, sound systems, fireworks, obviously, supplies and equipment, printing, porta-potties, bus rentals, et cetera. Last year, we had 23 participating Wilmington-based nonprofits, 18 of whom were down there operating fundraising booths, and we believe rely on this celebration to a large extent to raise a goodly portion of their funds for the year. And those are the ones that we're proposing to be located at the back of the Common. As we get closer, it'll be important for residents to check our website, make sure they understand the schedule, where parking will be, where parking will not be. We're going to have to have some flexibility. For example, St. Thomas has between now and then a wedding scheduled. We're going to have to close that lot. So folks are going to have to go online, learn the bus routes, plan accordingly, realize they're going to have to carry their blankets, their strollers, onto the bus to get them down to the Common if they want to come down. As we also get closer, we plan on putting a notice in the local newspapers, explaining to everyone what will be on our website, the same information, but explaining to folks what the changes are, and help folks, A, be aware of it, B, plan for it. So formally, our request is to utilize the Town Common and the parking lot next to the Fourth of July building from July 1 to July 7. And I expand the dates to include setting up of the carnival. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I think the way I'd like to do this is to find out what recommendations, if any, we have from the Manager, open it up to the Board, open it up to the audience, and then return to the Board if necessary. So, Mr. Hall, what do you have? Do you have any written recommendations? What do you have for us?
Well, I have spoken with both the Police Chief and the Fire Chief in terms of any issues related to security. The both chiefs believe they can work within the constraints of this site. As Scott mentioned, the Police Department is looking to close off the School Street. Actually, it's my understanding, the plan would be to close off traffic or divert traffic down Adams Street. So people coming down Middlesex would have to take the right onto Adams Street, and then Church Street would remain open to traffic. The Fire Department, you know, their main concern is access into the site in the event of whether it's a fire emergency or medical emergency. The existing site, the site that has historically been used is obviously constrained as well. So they're used to dealing with this environment. But the short answer is that they're prepared to deal with the carnival being located at the Swain School. You know, I think there, there are concerns in light of the density of the setup there, but in the end, they're prepared to work, work through those. With respect to Public Works, I've talked to Don Onisite. The situation on, from his perspective, isn't quite as impacted. They're still going to provide the same services they have in the past in terms of the collection of trash. Parking, I think his biggest concern relates to parking in light of the fact that the Swain School will no longer be available for parking. Obviously, historically, the Wildwood Cemetery has been used and will continue to be used. But as Scott has indicated, you know, one of the keys here is going to be the auxiliary sites and people looking to access this event using those auxiliary sites and the shuttle buses. Public buildings, one of the recommendations from George Hooper, the Superintendent of Public Buildings, is that since all of the activity, at least with respect to the carnival, is going to be located on the opposite side of the Common, that the high school be not open for use as it has in the past. Historically, the high school has been open for use of the restrooms. The plan proposed at this point is to just close those off. There will be, as I understand it, additional facilities, porta-johns set up both by Fiesta as well as the July 4 Committee at locations to be determined. You know, my personal feeling is that I think this is a workable arrangement, you know, this year. I think going forward, we need to really give a, some serious consideration as to, you know, whether the carnival can remain a part of the program, but we'll certainly work through the arrangement as it's been proposed.
Before going to the Board, I understand you had a comment to mention.
Mr. Chairman, in the interest of full disclosure, I just want to get it out there publicly that I am on the Fourth of July Committee, have been for the past decade-plus, and have enjoyed every minute of it. And I've talked to Town Council. There's really no conflict, but, and I did send a letter to the Town Clerk on the full disclosure that are on the Committee, but I am going to abstain from any discussion or vote on this this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Let's go to the Board. Anybody here have any questions or comments?
I'm just, I'm sure it's all been said. I just want to, you know, thank you, Mr. Grant and your Committee continuously with volunteerism. I mean, I know I drive by there in the wintertime, and you folks are at the Fourth of July building, and obviously, you're planning. It takes a lot of work and effort in doing it. And I hear a great response, not only here in the Town, owning a business in the community, people from Boricca and Tuxbury and Brunton, they all comment about it, and they enjoy it. And it's a good time. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
And I, to enlarge my pride echo what Mr. McCoy has raised. I know that the Committee, for many, many years, has done extraordinary job putting this together. And to me, the Fourth of July activities that I consider to be indispensable to the Town are the fireworks and the activities that are on the Common. And I'm not married to the idea of the carnival. I understand the, and some of the numbers that you've thrown out, and would love the opportunity to discuss them in more detail at some point. But I understand that the carnival is a major source of funding those activities that you've described, and that I think are such an important aspect of the Town. But some of the, and if the gentleman who authored the letter isn't here to speak, I'll certainly make sure that I make reference to that. But I share some of the concerns of one particular neighbor, and I know you've responded to that. And I share some of those concerns going forward. And I think that we need to really look hard at whether or not there are other ways to fund the, some of the events that we're talking about, i.e. fireworks and all the stuff on the Fourth. With all of that being said, I also recognize that the unpredictable nature of this construction process with the new high school, and specifically, the appeals that have been filed and, you know, delayed that project, have made it very difficult for the Town to plan, very difficult for folks like the Fourth of July Committee to plan their events. And, you know, these aren't events that happen overnight. And they take some planning. And I, you know, on the one hand, I feel as though the Town as a, as a Town ought to be able to step up to, you know, to subsidize at least a portion of what would be lost if we didn't have the carnival. And I think that service organizations and private, private entities could help us, you know, to continue to subsidize those other components of it. The problem is time. And so, from my standpoint, you know, unless our public safety officials tell me that this is an unmanageable situation, my take is to kind of get through this process without sacrificing, you know, an important event that so many people in Town have come to enjoy and to expect. But I think, you know, when we get through this summer, we need to, I think we need to revisit that and take a look at, you know, to what extent we can fund those other events without, you know, really imposing on the neighborhood. And I think, from what I'm hearing from Mr. Grant and other folks, and it doesn't appear to have a, you know, a whole bunch of neighbors in here objecting to this and protesting, and just the sense that I'm getting is that folks understand that we're in kind of a, you know, predicament. And I think they're willing to kind of go with the flow. But I think we've got to take a hard look at this when the Manager has the opportunity of approaching the budget season to figure out what the Town can do to try and make up for some of those, for some of those funds if we go another direction. So I feel compelled to lay that on the table going forward here.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, I was certainly sympathetic of the concerns the neighbors have. And that's why I wrote to them, invited them to a committee meeting, and we discussed those issues and heard what they had to say. The unknown to me, aside from where do we replace $40,000 in income that pays for fireworks, et cetera, that comes from the carnival, is how much harm do we do eliminating the carnival attendees? How much harm do we do to those 18 community groups that are down there raising money?
Yeah, valid point. And I'm glad you make that point, because in terms of the timing, on top of putting the Fourth of July Committee and the Town in a, in a box time-wise, I should have mentioned that they are also a party to figure into that and how that would put an unfair burden on them. So that's something that I agree we need to, to figure out. I'm not clear myself. I appreciate the fact that you just said 40,000. I had some preconceived notions of how much the Fourth of July Committee generates in revenue, just based on numbers I've heard about fireworks. But I, you know, that's, that's helpful to me to hear the number 40,000. And then we do have to figure out what some of these other entities, you know, how that fits into their fundraising. So I, I recognize that point and appreciate that you raise it. Thank you.
That is a good point, because all the organizations and the people going out, each complement each other. I'm sure the carnival, in its own way, does complement those organizations for our people. They're going to buy pizza, they're going to buy other items, and it's, yeah, it's you look at the big picture. But then again, you've got to, like the Chairman stated, you have residents in the area, and it's another factor.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And I thought it's, so, yeah.
Sure. A lot of points have already been made. I had a list of questions here. A lot of them have already been answered. Some of the points that were made by Slakman Newhouse, I'm certainly of a similar mindset. Just under full disclosure, I'm part of one of the organizations that does benefit from the finances, so I want to make sure that that's stated upfront, that I'm part of the Wilmington Lions Club. I think that a lot of us are saying the same thing, that we recognize the fact that we're in a smaller footprint. The question I had for you, Mr. Grant, is the previous carnival gave the impression that it was rather spread out, because you certainly had a bigger footprint. Is the intention to have just as many rides and activities and have everything essentially look the same? Or is the intention to potentially scale it back? Because I know you have that plan there. Is that smaller?
The intention is to have as much of a carnival there as we can while complying with safety regulations.
Sure.
And satisfying the Fire Department requirements.
Okay. So that answers that question. My other concern was specifically about School Street and Drury Lane, and I'm pleased that the recommendation of Police and Fire is to shut that down. That was something I was concerned about, and also Middlesex and Church. But I'm feeling better about the answers that I received on that. In addition, and I don't want to take us on the wrong path, but had there been any discussions about future other locations that we might be able to look at in the future? Is that something that you would be open to in the future after this year?
Certainly. And when we met with the abutters, I made a representation to the abutters that I would have that conversation with the Town. I don't know off the top of my head, and it doesn't have to be off the top of my head, because I have put a lot of thought into it, where there is a viable alternative location at this point that works logistically.
Sure.
To do what, what we do every year.
So I think in summary, what I would say is that I would be in favor to support it for this year with the intention that Police and Fire deem it to be safe, and that it meets the fire and police codes that we need, with the understanding that we would go back and understand some of the soft costs from the Town, Town's perspective, how we could work with the number that, I mean, obviously, I'd like to see the carnival be there, but, you know, discuss that point further, and then also really do some work on looking at other locations. I know your Committee's done an excellent job in doing that, but just to, to get some information on that.
I know that, and most folks here probably recognize and remember that you go to the Board of Appeals for a special permit. I presume that those issues of specific location, do they, are they laid out in detail at the Board of Appeals as to equipment and machinery and all that stuff?
Typically, no, because of where the carnival previously was. I would say that it's going to be incumbent upon me to come in with that plan. And frankly, some, some conditions that we're imposing on the carnival that we, in the issuance of this, the presumed issuance of the special permit for the carnival, are willing to live with, as to closing times, operating times, the music, lights, et cetera.
Okay.
But the Board of Appeals is certainly going to have the opportunity to, to see the layout of the carnival and its proximity to residences.
Right. And as I sit here, and Ms. O'Connell raises that point, there's certainly some details that I think should be ferreted out. I'm trying to decide, you know, as we sit here at Board of Selectmen, we're, we're being asked to approve the use of town property, the special permit and conditions and layout. To me, I certainly am comfortable with the Board of Appeals covering. So I'm assuming you've not been through that process, but you're going through that process.
I'm anticipating at this point being on the April 10th agenda.
Okay.
And of course, all the abutters will receive notice.
Okay. Anything else up here?
Yeah, briefly. I mean, a lot of it's already been said, so I don't want to belabor it. But, you know, what my concern is, this has been a layup vote for me for the last four years, that I've, all the years that I've been on the board. It's always been, my faith in the committee is unwavering. There are a tremendous bunch of folks and they work so hard during the entire week, including the two that are represented here among a few others. Certainly my faith in our public safety professionals is unwavering. So I have no concerns in that regard. And so, all the years up until now, it's been an easy yes vote because traditionally it had been perfectly, in my mind, perfectly suited for the space in which it was running. It was away from residential areas and it just, the way the traffic flowed and the people flowed, just seemed to work real well. And so, when this came about this year, and I think we've all been kind of anticipating and waiting to find out what was going to be the proposal that would be made, this isn't a layup for me this year. And I don't want to be a Scrooge guy or a Debbie Downer, but I'm not a big fan of the carnival personally, but I certainly wouldn't, I wouldn't want to speak against or vote against the carnival because I don't like it. I want to provide for the benefit of the community. And I think the community generally does benefit from it. There's more positive that comes from the presence of the carnival than negative, I think, generally. And so, you make that investment. You kind of put up with some of the stuff that comes along with it in order to get the benefits. In this particular case this year, the location, I'm wondering whether or not there's going to be enough benefit to offset the, I guess, potential for the negative. And we don't know. And I'm hopeful that I'll be proven wrong. That said, I'm going to move forward based on the positive answers that I heard about public safety and the buses and the schedules and all the other things seem like they will be able to be worked out. I'll be voting in favor of it. However, I really want to strongly voice what my colleagues voiced a few moments ago, that, that it not become the exception, that becomes the rule. This year, at that site, I think it's the only site that's feasible and reasonable for us to consider, so we should blaze forward and make the best of it. I just really hope that we collectively as a board, and that you and your committee and whatever can, if we're going to keep a carnival, can, cannot take off the discussion the potential for finding a more suitable site in the future. Because I believe that it's a little bit more of a, of an impact on the residents in that area and the community generally in that area. So I would, I would really like to see us make a concerted effort to find a more suitable long-term location for the carnival after this summer, if we intend to keep the carnival at all. So that's my, that's my position on it. I wanted to have my voice heard. And I thank you very much for your thoughtfulness and for the work you're putting in and for all of the committee as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Hearing all the questions up here. Any questions or comments from the audience? Okay. Seeing that there are none, I think it only fair, first of all, before, before we put it to a vote, we, the Board of Selectmen had, in fact, received correspondence from an abutter on School Street. And I think it's fair for me to characterize the nature of those concerns. I think that Mr. Grant has already addressed them, but I wanted to make sure he had an opportunity to specifically address them in case, you know, in the event we raise them again. So, again, this was correspondence directed to the board in February. It was actually directed to Mr. Grant, and we were copied on it. And I would characterize it as follows. That the abutter specifically objected to the location for the carnival rides and, and characterized that, those activities as being disruptive and inappropriate for that particular neighborhood. He points out the four streets that, that are there and explains why he believes that's, you know, an inappropriate location. He cites issues related to noise and, and bright lights, and then the crowds generated by that. And then he also expresses concern over the behavior that certain folks who attend those events engage in. And then he encourages the committee to consider other venues. And he gives some detail as to, as to those possible venues. So I just want to make sure folks realize, first of all, that the author of this letter realizes that we've looked at this and reviewed it, also that the general public knows that this letter is here and the general tenor of the letter. So by all means, if you have further comment or if you think you've covered it, just say so.
Well, I did, as the board knows, respond to Mr. Palkey's letter and copied, copied the board. But the issues I addressed, the issues that he raised that I addressed in his letter, I've also addressed this evening.
Right. That's, that was.
But thank you.
My view as well, but wanted to make sure I gave you the opportunity. Okay, that said, any other, yes, Mr. Kyra?
Just a quick question, maybe, for off in the future, I'm not sure. But when, when is the artificial turf going to take place at the football field? And is it going to be at the same time as the event? Will that be affected by fireworks? Has that been thought about? Because we don't want, I don't know that we want fireworks being shot off on a new artificial turf, just as.
Right, right. We will certainly revisit with the high school building committee, you know, the specific timing relative in, in the construction process of the turf field. What I can tell you is that going, my understanding up to this point in time is that the fireworks per se can be conducted this year at, at no material risk to any work that's being done at the site. Going forward, we continue to look at where those fireworks can be located. We believe that based on the, the as-built site that will be the high school site, we believe that there is an appropriate location that not only meets all of the regulations, but from a practical standpoint, with certain conditions, wouldn't be a detriment to the school building, the field, or any other ancillary facilities. You raise a good point in terms of the specific timing of the construction. I think we're good on that, but I will double check and make sure before the committee goes to the, the Board of Appeals, presumably on April 10th.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just comment on that. I have had discussions both with Gilbane, the CM at Risk, and our OPM with respect to the timing on this. Mike Marcella, who's the contact at Gilbane, has advised me that at, at the time of the activities, fireworks activities, the expectation is that the sod on the existing field will be pulled up. There will be some preliminary work done in terms of materials put on the new, on the, the new field, but the actual carpet will not be down at that time. But he believes that it'll, the field will be in a condition that will accommodate launching the fireworks without any danger of damaging the new field.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that. Anything else here, or do we, does someone have a motion?
I'd make a motion, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion in favor granting the Fourth of July Committee request to use municipal parking lot for carnival and town common for the annual Fourth of July festivities. And if you want me to be more specific, Scott, if you want to state the dates, or is that going to be sufficient?
It's July 1st through July 7th, just to, again, cover carnival coming in and setting up.
All right. It's stated by the chairman of the Fourth of July Commission.
Second.
Made in second. Anything further? All in favor? It's unanimous, four in favor, none opposed. Mr. Smart, we are abstained. Thank you very much. Good luck with it.
Thank you.
And we will, our next scheduled appointment is with the Yentile Farm Development Committee regarding a status update. And we'll just give a couple of minutes here for members of the committee to settle in and set up their, excuse me?
Just to let you know that the Wilmington hockey team did win tonight, seven to two, so we'll be going to the. Yeah, that's, that's why I did it now.
That's great. Boston Garden Sunday, right?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
If you don't mind me crowding you a little bit.
No.
Good evening. We're, we're ready when you are.
Good evening. Thank you. I'd like to thank the board for the opportunity to update them on progress of the Yentile Farm Development Committee. My name's Dan Bamberg. Up here with me is Kendra Ammaral and Anthony Pronsky. They're two members of the committee, kind of auxiliary members that we brought on board from the town that have helped us with a lot of the technical and other aspects of running the committee. First, I just wanted to introduce the committee. A number of members are here. I'll introduce them. Judy O'Connell, who's on the board, is our chairwoman. Jeff Hull is on the, on the committee as well. Myself, Kevin Kyra, who's here in the audience. Mike Gracia, Ed Lau. Mark Nazif is here. Ed, Ed Reichsken is also here. And we also have four members from, from some of the key departments in the town, some of the directors. Deb Cipriani is on the committee. Carol Hamilton from the Planning and Conservation Board. Shelley Newhouse, who's also here, the Health Director. And Jamie McGoldy is the Assistant Superintendent, also here on DPW. Briefly, so as I said, we've got a 12-member committee. We, we had our initial meeting on October 4th, almost three months ago, over more than three months ago, four months ago, actually. We've had seven committee meetings since that date. I think they've been very productive. It's been a real pleasure working with these people. It's a great committee. I give my, my hats off to the Board of Selectmen and the town management for selecting the folks on it. As I said, we have advisory members, Anthony and Kendra, who have been a tremendous help to us. We've also established a relationship with Textron, and they've assigned a liaison, Joe Kilos, who is here also, and also Wilmington resident, is, is, he attends all our committee meetings and we seek input from him. And just the committees, one of the things we've already done is done a site walk in addition to the seven meetings we've had. We did a site walk, went out to the site, and Anthony, Carol, and helped walk, kind of walk us through the site and explain the wetlands and where they are, roughly where they are and the flagging and all that, so that we have an understanding of that. And so, the first thing we're going to do is have Anthony take you through, take you through an overview of the site, then look at the site mapping and, and RAD submission, and then talk through the process a little bit on that submission, so.
Thank you, Dan. The Yentile Farm property gives the town an opportunity for a multipurpose recreational area. The physical site is 20.3 acres. It has frontage on Cross Street and Main Street, Route 38, and it contains wetlands to the northeast and southeast. It is partially located within the 100-year floodplain being adjacent to the Maple Meadowbrook. The total buildable land is approximately nine acres. The property was used for farming as far back as the early 1900s. The Yentile family purchased it in 1934 and then sold it to a developer in 2005 for a planned 55-and-over housing development. The town then purchased the property in 2012. This is a modified copy of the ANRAD plan. ANRAD stands for abbreviated Notice of Resource Area Delineation. As you can see, the parcel is bounded by Main Street at the bottom, Cross Street to the left, residential lots in Textron on Lowell Street, near the top of the plan, and Maple Meadowbrook to the southeast or right side of the plan. The two blue areas represent bordering vegetated wetlands, and the three gold areas are isolated The environmental permitting process for this property is as follows. The town hired Norse Environmental to flag all resource areas. The DPW Engineering Division then created a topographical survey plan to show all the flagged resource areas. And the ANRAD plan and application was filed with DEP and the Wilmington Conservation Commission on February 6th and was recently approved. An Army Corps general permit requesting the filling of the onsite isolated wetlands, as shown on the plan, is the three gold areas, will be filed by the Engineering Division this month. Lastly, a notice of intent filing with DEP and the Wilmington Conservation Commission will be submitted after our final design has been completed.
Do they have any questions for Anthony about the, referring to the yellow area? I hope he's, we'll be able to fill those in and use that area as opposed to the blue areas, pretty much we can't use that area.
So, may I? My cartography is a little weak. So the blue we can't touch. I'm trying to get a sense of.
We can do stuff like a walking path, but there's all kinds of restrictions around that area that make it pretty expensive to do something.
Okay. So. I'm just trying to get a sense of what the property is that's potentially usable. I see the block down the bottom, which is private area for retail. I see the foundation of the.
Kind of the.
Yeah, what's the shape?
Weird-looking L thing.
Yeah. This is the property line right here.
Oh, okay.
And it goes all the way this way. Right out. This is down Cross Street. So basically, all this white area here, and we're trying to fill in the three gold areas. So here, all this white area is the buildable.
About nine acres.
Okay. That was one of the surprising parts going through this is, out of the 20 acres, it's probably about nine that, right now, is usually.
The foundations, and this is where the terrace.
In terms of the, in terms of the filling, what's the, in layman's terms, what's the regulatory process that enables us to do that?
We're presently going before the, or, excuse me, we are submitting an application with the Army Corps to fill in the isolated wetlands. Any, any isolated wetlands greater than 5,000 square feet, you have to permit through the Army Corps.
Okay.
And so, those are the, the combined, those are the three areas. They're, they're over 5,000 square feet. They're roughly 17,000 and some change.
Okay. So given the nature of the land in question, the nature of the resource area, there is a process in the regulations that enables us to do that if we go through certain permitting, and in this case with the Army Corps of Engineers?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
So, the work that the committee's done so far is really in information gathering and in three major areas. The first is the site, understanding what's there, also understanding, you know, what we can use and what we can't use. And to that end, as I said, we've done the site walk. We've worked with Anthony and Jamie, understanding what's there from the land standpoint. The second thing we've been working on is gathering information from the community. And we've gathered quite a bit of information, the biggest piece of which was a survey we put out off of the town website, as well as other venues. We offered it in hard copy at the town hall and other areas. And that was a great success. We owe a lot of that to Kendra here, who put it up on the website. I told Jeff Hull earlier at a committee meeting what a great hire she was, and I just wanted to give her a plug. We also sought feedback from the elderly services and the recreation commissions. We had the high school athletic director come into a committee meeting, and, you know, we got his input on what the needs were and what he thought. We also even, Joanne Benton, had the elementary school, some of the elementary school, reach out to the younger kids who don't always have a voice in this kind of stuff, the third graders and fourth graders and whatever, and get their ideas, and we also received that information from them as well. And also, with the help of Ed Reichsken, we reached out to the youth organizations in town, and we designed a questionnaire, and most of them filled them out and submitted them back. And we even followed up with some to make sure that they had the opportunity to send them in. So, it was pretty extensive. I think we've really got, like I said, a thousand people, I thought was tremendous response to the survey. Maybe it's just me, but I thought that was really good, so. And the third piece, I said three, we did one, the site, two, the community input. And the third one is we're trying to get information around other communities that have done these types of projects, and what we can learn from them, what best practices we can get from them, et cetera. And so doing that, we've also, in looking at the site, where Textron abuts it, and they have a recreational area right there that abuts it, we've engaged them to talk about possible cooperative efforts and joint usage. We haven't really gone anywhere with that. We've just started talking to them, but I think it's a good idea if we can work that out. So, two of the recreational sites that we're looking at, one is the Nick and Wolf Bar in New Hampshire. It's a much larger site than this one. Judy has been the point person on that one, and she's done a good job getting a lot of good information. They've been very helpful and very forthcoming, and have agreed to work with us, you know, almost do anything we ask them to as far as providing information and input. The other one we're looking at, and a lot of people have kind of suggested this one because it's a local one, I think people are familiar with it, is the Ipswich River Park in North Reading. And we've been working to get information out of them as well. That is also a larger site, not as big as the Nick, I don't believe. And we're still making those contacts. The individual who kind of runs that is a little harder to get a hold of, and we're working to get input from them. But one thing we want to do tonight is take you through the results of the survey that we put out. And before I pass it over to Kendra, I just wanted to say thank you to all the people, this is for the public TV mostly, but all the people who provided input to the survey, because it was a really good response, and we're real happy with it. So, I'll let Kendra take you through the results of the survey, and she'll answer any questions I have.
Thank you. I know the selectmen have received the detailed results of the survey, but what we wanted to do is go over a little more in detail our methodology, as well as talk about what we've taken away from the results of it. A little bit about the methodology, we decided one of the easiest ways to get the maximum amount of respondents was to do something electronically, online. So, we developed an online survey. We were able to find a service for free to do that and allow us to collect the data and analyze it without having to pay a single penny, so that was a good service. We put it up on our website, as well as pushed it out to the library and the public schools to get maximum exposure. Recognizing that not everybody is comfortable doing online surveys, we also turned it into a paper survey and made it available at multiple public buildings, and able to be dropped off at multiple buildings again, so that everybody could feel like they could be included and have their say and have an opportunity to participate. The response was strong. We had over 1,000 surveys completed, which is pretty significant. We did run it between December 1st and the end of January of 2013, so we did cover a holiday period in that. One of the reasons why we had it go so long was because we knew the holidays can sometimes impact people's ability or time to participate. We did a lot of outreach in the media to let everybody know that it was out there twice, both in December, when it was originally launched, and then again after the holidays in January, just as a reminder for those who may have thought that they wanted to fill it out, but got kind of busy over that time. Almost 96% of the respondents lived in Wilmington, and of the 4% that didn't, they had some strong connection to the community. Either they grew up here, their parents live here, they have family who lives here, so generally, the response was, of course, connected. The majority of our respondents fell between 41 and 60 years old. We did try to get a younger group, the 21 to 40 group, was our next biggest showing. I think that does tend to show the group of people who have kids in the community, and so they were able to talk about what they were looking for for their children. And then, as Dan mentioned, we did get some input from some of the elementary school kids as well, which was good. So, just the overall results that we saw, overwhelmingly, the desire was for a combined or a mixed-use recreational area, something that allowed both athletic or organized sports, as well as more passive recreation. I think both in this single question, as long as all the open-ended responses and some of the other questions, this just kept coming out loud and clear, was that this mixed use of both passive and active was the desire. We asked people to indicate their interest in certain types of things, things that the committee had thought that we had heard from the questionnaires and the interviews that had been done prior to. One equaled not at all interested, five equals extremely interested. And as you see, again, we're seeing at the highest level, the walking and jogging trails, picnic and pavilion areas, playground structures. So, again, the more passive recreation activities seem to get the highest interest from people, and again, in line with that mixed use and having a place for everybody. We did want to ask about greatest concerns, you know, sort of get in a sense of what are going to be the questions, what are going to be the issues that people had thought of. Parking was one of the biggest. Just the location itself, you can tell we'll have some parking challenges that we may have to address. Inappropriate activities after hours, that's sort of securing the place at night. It is fairly large, so making sure it was a place that was safe for all at all times. And then traffic. Obviously, the intersections are challenging, and those came up as the highest concerns. And then after that, it was things such as cost to maintain, cost to construct, accessibility for those with mobility challenges, and some other concerns. And then finally, what was the most critical to determining the use of the property? Again, we came back with the same sort of mixed use, passive and active recreation or recreational activities for all ages. And the selectmen have seen the open-ended responses, where you got a lot of things asking for activities where seniors are interested and more comfortable, where the youngest of children are comfortable, where sports-age kids are comfortable. So, again, it was a very consistent theme. It was a consistent theme throughout the survey, as well as a consistent theme throughout the questionnaires and the interviews that we conducted with the athletics director for the school and the various athletic groups. Some of the other comments that we did receive, and these were the comments that came through the interviews and the questionnaires that were sent out to the sports groups, as well as what we received back from the Recreation Commission, elderly services, and some other commissions. Things like walking trails and exercise stations, again, that were passive, pavilion and barbecue area, playground, sprinkler park. Multipurpose fields came up a lot, so having something where there's one field, but multiple sports activities can happen there. Cage for batting and golfing. One of the things that we didn't put on the list, but I thought was pretty fun, was the elementary school kids came out with a garden. They put on their list, looking for a garden, which I thought was pretty nice.
Okay. Before we go to the next step, so just if anybody here had questions for Kendra about the survey or any other...
I have one, I guess, observation more than anything. Interesting to me that in your graph of what are the greatest concerns, the second highest, albeit not by a lot of percentage points, but your second highest concern was inappropriate activities. But when you look at the appropriate activities, really, as long as it was a combination of active and passive, there seemed to be, you know, a really wide net that was cast and a wide range of opinions as to what could happen over there. So, I'd be interested in learning, and you may comment on it now or at some point in the future. What improper activities could there be, you know, as long as it's passive and active, some combination?
I think they're thinking more after-hours than that.
Ah, thank you. All right, I get it. I get it. So, activities, not uses, is what...
Yes.
Ah, all right. That makes more sense. Thank you.
Unsanctioned uses.
Ah, I got you. Thank you.
Luke could probably tell you more.
Legitimate concern, then. Thank you.
So, the thing that I was surprised to see was how much of the interest was in, I'll say, non-athletic, so not, you know, soccer, baseball, football, street hockey, you know, lacrosse. It was all, you know, walking parks, pavilions, cookouts. I was surprised to see that kind of feedback, at least it'd be, you know, clearly the predominant where everybody was. You know, the first four, the first five or six of them really don't have anything to do with a sport. I mean, walking's a sport, I guess.
That was kind of my observation, too, is that it seems like generally, the respondents want to see the use of the space be available to the widest and most diverse population. In other words, not focused on kids that are between third and seventh grade, right? You know, so it's not, just that population would get use out of it, and everyone else is like, you can drive by and watch, but you don't get to use it. I think generally, people want it to be available to everyone in some way, some shape, some form. What I also, what I didn't see, and I don't know if it was because the question wasn't asked, or maybe it wasn't asked in a way that it pulled the information out, was a desire for use of green or environmentally friendly materials or fixtures or whatever. In other words, if there's going to be lighting there, can it be solar-based lighting, or if it's going to be, I don't know, other materials, or if there was going to be any kind of outbuilding there, could it be powered with solar or whatever technologies? So, you know, that's, to me, something that I would like to see us be forward-thinking as to how we power and/or light the space, hopefully, if there's a need to, that we not just run another couple of big cables out there and burn some juice. Maybe we can do it thoughtfully, so that's just a thought that I have.
Right.
Hoping, just if I could answer that, is that we're hoping with the next step, that when we engage with some design services and things of that nature, that we can get some recommendations from some enlisted professionals that we may need to hire at some point in this project that could bring some of that information to the committee that we could bring back in the form of another update and potentially public forums to discuss those options and work through some of the cost structure of the project. So, it's certainly very valid feedback. This exercise was more intended from the use standpoint, but certainly the efficiencies and the cost to construct and maintain. We believe that that green initiative would fall into that, and Kendra, certainly, if you want to add anything to that, because I know we've talked a little bit about that.
Yeah, well, I would say I went through almost every one of the open-ended responses, and you're right, that didn't necessarily come up, but we weren't specifically asking to that level, and it probably will come out. And there are a lot of great opportunities in terms of green building approaches, where, you know, this could be energy-neutral, energy-negative, could definitely be in line with, you know, even a lead kind of standard to achieve, depending on what's going to be on the property itself.
Thank you.
Okay. The last thing we're going to go through is next steps. The next big step is we're preparing, with Jeff's help, a request for funding for town committee to do a conceptual and schematic design. He's just working that, and we'll submit that for a town meeting in the near future. We'll also continue having our public meetings on a regular basis. As I said, that first point is kind of important. If we're not going to get people helping us with the schematic design and concepts, it's going to be a lot slower process, I think, for us. So, we'll continue having our public meetings. Next meeting is Thursday, April 11th, in this room at 7:30. We'll continue getting research from the Nick and the Ipswich River and any other sites that we, people suggest, to get best practices and ideas around what we can put on the spot. And also, we're going to start exploring possible ways to offset the costs through fundraising and grant opportunities, the costs that are going to come along with this project. So, you know, just like I said, it's a really good group. The committee has done a really good job thus far. I just want to make one other comment. In talking to Anthony about the INRAD permit request, the time period that they gave him is a three-to-eight-month time period for getting approval for filling in those gold spots. So, depending on how quickly or slowly that comes, it's going to, you know, we can continue to, obviously, to work, but without knowing if we can fill those in or not, it's kind of keeps it, you're still guessing as to what you got to work with right now. So, that's about it for now, unless you guys think of anything else I didn't talk to. Any more questions or...
If I may, Mr. Chairman. What an amazing job this committee has done in a short amount of time, a boatload of information, going a lot of good directions that I think you guys have covered a lot of bases already, and I realize it's early in the game. Just a comment, I think this is Wilmington. This is what we do. Volunteerism is amazing. Just sitting up here at this meeting, we have the full disclosure on this committee, full disclosure on that committee. I think that's a microcosm of Wilmington in general, and this committee right here, and thank you all for coming here, and the representative from Textron. It's just always, it just makes me feel so proud to be a part of this town. And what happens when you guys, you know, you made a phone call, would you mind being on a committee? Sure. And what you guys have accomplished and girls have accomplished in, you know, a few months is just excellent. And I'm proud to say I belong to this town.
Thank you.
I don't know what that comment was about the after-hours thing.
Anything else up here?
You alluded to potentially as much as eight months to determine whether or not we can use or fill in some of this gold space. My question was really about timelines. What's, can you give me a sense of, what's the long-range planning? When do you think we'll have progress being made towards developing whatever it is that we developed? We're really having... Huh? Years away from that, or next week? Eight, nine months? Am I asking an impossible question?
It always, it obviously depends on funding. All things are possible with funding. As Dan said at the town meeting, we're looking for money for design to do conceptual and schematic design. From there, we could, and that would probably take, I don't know, I'd say maybe four months, four or five months, depending on the amount of process we want involved around it, how much public process, how many meetings, how many iterations. From there, it will go into design development and construction drawings. That's, again, another phase of it, which will take a number of months, depending on how many iterations and public process that you want. By the time we get done with design development, we'll have a good sense, order of magnitude, of what the concept is going to cost and what the direction is going to cost, and then we get into fundraising, and what the decision is in terms of both privately fundraising and whether or not the town is interested in putting in any public funds, how much wants to be raised prior to shovels in the ground. I know Judy's done some research on the Nick, that they didn't put shovels in the ground until they had raised...
2.5 million.
2.5 million, yeah. So, fundraising will ultimately, I think, be the driver.
I'd just like to add, once it is finally designed, it needs to go back with what DEP and the Conservation Commission for approval. So, that's basically a notice of intent after it's been designed.
So, I'm thinking about next year's town meeting, but that's probably premature. Is that a little overambitious, that we would potentially be going to the town next May, looking for funding?
Maybe ambitious, overly ambitious, we'll see.
Yeah.
Is that fair to say?
It's a shot.
Ambitious.
We had several pre-meadings before this presentation, and we very specifically did not want to give any sort of project timeline, because we felt, just from a logical standpoint, it'd be very difficult to do that, having not engaged with the design firm. So we don't want to be very, we don't want to be premature in making any announcements to this border or to a general population without having all the checks and balances throughout the whole process, to feel that we can come with a very concise, thorough package that we can present to the community, that we can essentially back up in every way, shape, or form. And I think to do, this was really meant to be an introductory meeting, just so that you could be introduced to the committee, to know the steps that we're taking. I can't say enough, from the town's perspective, with Anthony, with Jamie, even with Carol and Winifred and Shelley, from the Board of Health perspective, have really gone above and beyond, working with the manager and with Kendra, to see that, you know, for example, with the Conservation Commission, we were approved in one meeting, and that was some of the work that was done during town hall hours, to make sure that we could maximize all of those meetings. So, you know, I don't want to give any indication, in some of the research I've done with the NIC, they, it took them six years to bring their place to fruition, but that was because they had a design firm, they ended up switching directions. They're a 35-acre parcel land, they're privately owned, they have an endowment fund, they have a Friends of the NIC fund, they have a depreciation fund. So, and that was five, six, seven years ago. So to be throwing out metrics that are not based in today's construction standards or a year, we know how construction costs can change, it would be probably not in our best, you know, in our best interest to prematurely quote any sort of project timeline at this point. So we're very passionate as a committee, because certainly all the ladies and gentlemen that are here tonight put a lot of hours into this, and it certainly comes at an expense of personal sacrifice in some other manner. So we're very motivated to get a project timeline and bring it back to the community and put shovels in the ground. But as you can see, from the Army Corps standpoint, the three-to-eight months is their responding to us. It's not the town not being ready to receive this response, so we also don't have full control of the process. So more to follow on that, so.
That's a good answer. I was, you know, you helped me get a gauge on what we're talking about, if this was a nine-year project, or a four-year, or a three-years, and those answers are more than sufficient for me to just get an understanding of the overall process. And I'm a little impatient, because I kind of want to see it come to fruition, but I also recognize that these things sometimes have to kind of run their course. So I compliment you all for your efforts, and thank you very much.
Yeah, to Judy's point, we didn't want to put the cart before the horse, and we didn't have even approval for a schematic and conceptual design firm from the town yet. We didn't want to assume that that was forthcoming, so we're kind of hesitant to put too much out there.
Anything else? Thank you. Appreciate your time.
You're up.
Our next agenda item is a Board of Selectmen discussion regarding a review of the proposed town meeting warrant.
Mr. Chairman, the warrant, as it is prepared this evening for consideration and approval by the Board, is the same warrant as was provided to the Board at your last meeting. There are 39 articles contained on the warrant. Since I went through them previously, unless you prefer otherwise, it is the same as it was previously presented. So at this point, I would request that the Board authorize the warrant as prepared and sign off, so that the warrant can be posted.
And we'll entertain a motion to that effect. Before doing so, though, Jeff, for residents who might be watching on TV, can you just remind everyone where they can obtain copies of the warrant?
Yes, the warrant will be available in the town manager's office during regular business hours. It's also available in the town clerk's office. And just as a point of information, with respect to the meeting date, particularly concerning the election, as you know, at the Board's last meeting, it was agreed to combine the local elections with the state elections. So whereas the customary practice is to hold the local elections the Saturday prior to the Saturday town meeting, in this case, the election for local officials will be held on April 30th. Polls will open at 7:00 a.m. and will close at 8:00 p.m., and that will occur in conjunction with the state primary. Then the town election, the town meeting, for purposes of the budget and various articles, will take place on May 4th, beginning at 10:30 in the morning. And again, because of the school construction, the location for that meeting will be at the middle school auditorium.
Okay, with that said, do we have a motion to close the warrant? So moved.
Second.
And second, and anything further? All in favor? Unanimous? And just as a quick footnote to the warrant, the Board has discussed, to a limited degree, in open session, and more specifically in executive session, the prospect of an eminent domain taking. At this point, the Board has decided to keep all of its options open, has not included that in the warrant, but certainly the opportunity to include that in a warrant of a future annual or special town meeting is still possible. Anything else before we move on?
As I say, I just totally agree with you, Mr. Chairman. You know, simple and basic, you know, we do need to keep all our options available. We need to do what's in the best interest of the community. We also need to protect our interests, our finances, and our potential new high school. And, you know, hopefully, we can move in a positive direction and just keep all the options available to the Board, and we're just doing what's in the best interest of this community, period. Thank you.
Anything else? I think that says it. Communications, Mr. Hull.
Communications, we have a memorandum from Carol Hamilton, Director of Planning and Conservation. This is with respect to the certification from the Department of Housing and Community Development regarding the 10 Burlington Ave property. Today, I received confirmation, the town of Wilmington is certified by the Department of Housing and Community to, that it has achieved a 10.5% affordability in its housing stock. This is a significant achievement. Till the next census, the town has the ability to refuse affordable housing projects that do not meet community needs and goals without fear of being overturned by the Housing Appeals Court. Having said that, it also means that the town must maintain an affordability status through the next census. In order to do that, we must continue to provide and promote sensible housing alternatives for all members of the community. We have correspondence from the Massachusetts Municipal Association. This is with respect to seeking support from community leaders for the Chapter 90 funding. MMA is suggesting that the town, that communities contact the legislators about pursuing $300 million in Chapter 90 money and seek a five-year bond at $300 million in each of those years to address road maintenance and road reconstruction. Also, we have correspondence from the Shawshin Tech. This is providing the Board with the budget, the proposed budget from the Shawshin Tech. It's from Paula McShane Lambert, the treasurer. And in short, the budget that's being proposed is $25 million, $774,939, of which assessments will be in the amount of $18 million, $874.20. And the town's proposed assessment at this point is $3 million, 539,420, although the town is requested to set aside, essentially, or appropriate, $3 million, 612,275, in the event that Governor Patrick's Chapter 70 recommendations are not engrossed by the legislature. Just for information purposes, that is the amount that we have budgeted, so that appears to be the worst-case scenario, so to speak, in terms of cost. If the lower number comes to fruition, then the town will, they'll see a reduction over the original amount of $72,855. We have correspondence from Verizon. This is with regard to changes in channel lineups. This information is being available to, made available to subscribers, and a number of different channel changes. Also, one addition to this, to the correspondence I received today, a request to distribute a letter to members of the Board from Mark Nelson related to the articles that he has proposed for town meeting.
All right, and given that the Board has already taken a vote to close and sign the warrant for the annual town meeting, we'll open it up to public comments. Seeing none, new business and committee reports. Anything down here?
I will say, I was scheduled, I had registered to attend the MMA Legislative Breakfast in Andover last Friday, but at the scheduled time of 8:00, when it was due to start, it was a blizzard, and I elected, or I chose to stay, stay close to home. So I didn't attend that, but my understanding is, after I communicated with someone from the MMA later in that day, they went ahead and had it anyway. I think it was very poorly attended, so I'm not sure what the subject matter that was discussed, but I regret that I couldn't attend. So I don't have a report from that. But that being said, I didn't want to interrupt Mr. Hull when he was going through communications, but again, related to MMA, the act now, notice that they sent out about the five-year bond bill for Chapter 90 funding, I had some brief communication with Mr. Hull, trying to understand how we budget Chapter 90 funds, and if I say it right, Mr. Hull, please, or if I say it not correctly, please correct me, but it's my understanding that this five-year bond bill would significantly ease or give more power, or, that's the word I'll use, more power to Dawn Onset and Jeff and the people in the town, to be able to plan projects over the course of overlapping years, as opposed to waiting each year to see what comes in and trying to use the resources we have in a short construction season. So the five-year bond bill would really allow us to look at a longer-term horizon and plan for larger projects and fund larger projects. So is that a reasonable re-articulation of it?
Yes, it provides a measure of predictability, so that we can, there certainly are a number of roads throughout town that require either reconstruction or repaving. Some roads have been, have not been repaved for an extended period of time. The challenge that we currently face is, in each legislative session, we're waiting to hear what the appropriation in Chapter 90 funding will be. Last year, I believe it was, wasn't until July that we received the amount, and then, given the short construction season anyways, it makes it very difficult to get up to speed and get the work done.
And I think that creates this illusion that if you don't use the money by the end of the year, that, and then we go back to the state and say, oh, we need more money to fix our roads, and they say, well, you had money left over, you didn't even use. Well, it wasn't because we couldn't use it, it was because we had a short, too short of amount of a time from the moment we found out how much we were going to get to the end of the construction season. So again, this five-year really allows us to, as you said, predict and plan ahead. So the reason I bring it all up is, I think it's worthwhile either that we, as a town, from your office, perhaps, Jeff, send a letter to Representative Muselli, and I forgot his name, I'm sorry, the new representative from Burlington. What's the gentleman's name?
Gordon.
Oh, yeah, that's right, Representative Gordon, thank you. And perhaps even to Senator Tarr as well, just articulating our support of it, if you folks feel that way. I know that I will be just speaking on behalf of myself, sending off an email to those gentlemen just to say that I would encourage them to think that way. So I think the more they hear from us, the more, hopefully, they will, they will speak on our behalf.
Hearing no objection, I'd ask if the manager could take care of that correspondence.
Anything else, Thomas?
Not this evening, thank you.
I'm good, thank you.
Good. Just have one quick item. The Board will recall that twice in the past, two years ago and four years ago, the Board had included a warrant article relative to the Maple Meadow landfill and a request for special legislation. And it has not gotten much traction, I think is fair to say. Had a conversation with Senator Tarr recently. Our entire delegation has been supportive of it. Senator Tarr happened to be the sponsor of the bill when it originally was taken up, and he indicates that we've reached an agreement that we think the next, the best next step is not to throw something on the warrant again, but to have another meeting with DEP and our consultants. And, you know, the, kind of no news has been good news the last couple of years over there, but we want to make sure that we're closely tracking anything that happens. And so we are doing that, communicated that to Mr. Hull, who coincidentally, at the same time, had been talking to our consultants about reaching out and making sure we're clear on what plans, if any, are happening over there at Maple Meadow. So it's really, for the purposes of updating the Board and the general public, that the town continues to monitor that situation and work closely with our delegation to ensure that the town's interests are protected to the extent, fullest extent possible. So I'll update the Board, and when we get anything back on that. Yes?
Just a question regarding Maple Meadow, or is that not appropriate? It's helpful, it's constructive this time. No, I'm going to be attending a seminar early April that has to do with the state has some kind of initiative for green energy production, and I intended to have, it's on my list of things to do, to send Mr. Hull an email and describe the process to him, and I don't know that the answer is favorable or unfavorable to town, but it may be possible, you mentioned special legislation and so forth, it may be possible that that site might be eligible for some kind of state initiative, for like a solar or energy collection array or something. I don't know what kind of a mess the site's in right now, and I'm going to know a lot more about the process, what's being offered right now, when I go to the seminar early April. But I just wanted to throw that out to you, to have some thought, that it may, that this manager may be getting something from me in the future about how that may or may not be possible to, maybe the town or the property owner or whatever, seek out a potential interested party that might find cleaning up that site and installing like a solar energy array or something out there.
Yeah, I would, certainly, any information that you want to provide going forward in the future is welcomed. Just for informational purposes, the town, over the course of the last several years, has in fact raised the question of alternative energy sources and whether or not that's the, you know, would be an appropriate site for that, for uses such as that. Nothing has seemed to come from that, and really, the big thing is, what conditions would there be on the redevelopment vis-à-vis the town's interest in how the site is kept? So welcome the comments, and welcome the information you have.
This was something new that came out from the State Department of Economic and Financial Resources or some agency, and I think they came out with this initiative April, November of 2011. They came before the LSA and either the They came before the LSA in either December or November of last year, and they made some representation. And then out of that, they developed some kind of a seminar to try to get LSPs involved and try and go assist placement of those. And I just, I wasn't going to mention it, like I said, I was planning on sending an email to town manager, but because you actually mentioned it, I just thought I'd throw it out there, that this is, my understanding is, is something relatively new. So it may supersede whatever discussions you may not have had in the past.
Okay, thank you. I think that was it. I was last on the committee reports on new business, right? Important dates, Mr. Hull?
Important dates, we have March 17th Wilmington Company of Minutemen installation of officers at the Minutemen headquarters over at the Hardin Tavern at 2:00 p.m. March 19th is the Finance Committee Planning Board Joint Public Hearing relative to the warrant for the annual town meeting. That'll be held here at the Town Hall in the auditorium at 7:00 p.m. March 21st, the High School Building Committee will be meeting here at the Town Hall, Room 9, at 6:30. Also, that same evening registration, or that same day, registration deadline for the rookies' T-ball program. The Board of Selectmen's next meeting is March 25th, here at Room 9 at 7:00 p.m. On March 30th, we have the Easter egg hunt, which will begin at the Town Common at 2:00 p.m. On April 5th, the last day to register to vote in town elections and town meeting, the town clerk's office will remain open until 8:00 p.m. And then on April 6th, we have a rabies clinic at the Public Buildings Department, noon to 2:00. And I would just add, Mr. Chairman, with your indulgence, a couple of notes here with regard to some local activities. Certainly, as everybody's aware, the boys' hockey team is on their way to a repeat, and hopefully, we wish them well going forward. Also, wanted to note that the Wilmington High School Lamplighters Drama Guild, which is involved in a competition, they had a, their performance last Saturday down in Norwood, Still Falls, The Rain was the name of the play, they actually advanced to the finals, and they'll be performing in Boston the weekend of March 21st through the 23rd. Also, the school community forum on the ALIS program, which as many of you know is a protocol to respond to active shooters, unfortunate that we have to be talking about that, but there's a program that was scheduled on March 7th. It's been rescheduled, this is for the public, at 7:00 p.m. on March 20th at the Wilmington Middle School. And then also, on March 17th, the Lowell Catholic High School, there's going to be both a service and then a breakfast in honor of PFC John Landry Jr., memorial fundraiser, held at the Lowell Catholic High School.
Thank you for all of that information. Do we have a motion or adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded. Seconded, all in favor? Unanimous?